Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here in this nice, cool evening. First order of business is to adopt our agenda.
I would move to amend the agenda prior to adoption to include item 4C, which is to reappoint Mr. Hopkins as our Emergency Manager Director and Tom Kilpeck as our Deputy.
It's not to reappoint those positions, it's to appoint me,
to them.
Comma, me parentheses, Emergency Management Director and Tom Kilpeck, Emergency Services Representative, to the Rutland County Emergency Management Committee.
What he said.
Second.
Okay, any other changes to the agenda? None heard. All in favor of the agenda as amended, say aye. Most? No one? Select Board remark, we just have a few more people than normal. Remind everyone, if you would like to speak, we do need you to come forward and speak at the microphone, so that it becomes part of our minutes that are done on the computer and that everyone on Zoom can hear you. So it's not punishment, just needs to be, have everyone be heard. And we have a guest this evening, so we all have to be on our best behavior. That's all my remarks. Any other Select Board member?
The only remark I would have is I note that we have someone attending on Zoom that it looks like we just have last name, Powers slash Kelly, if we could just get first name for our records.
Chris Kelly.
Oh, okay.
All right, moving on. Item three is the possible consent agenda for minutes and warrants. Liquor licenses, pleasure of the board?
I'll move that we move items 3A, B, and C sub 1 through 4 to consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion and second, any discussion? None heard. All in favor of the motion to consent all of three of these, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Most? No one? I guess the minute should note that, as far as the minutes, I was not at that meeting, so I'm sort of abstained to that, one part of that? No? Don't have to? Whatever. Okay, I voted. Good. Now, we're up to item four, Select Board Reports, first from the Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, members of the community in person and on Zoom. Thank you for attending. We do have an interesting presentation to come later in the meeting, so I won't belabor my report, but I do want to highlight a couple of things. One, we have, we have had the good fortune of having a couple of staff additions since the last meeting. Ray Marku has started in the wastewater treatment division, and Ray's actually here with us tonight. Ray, thank you for being here, being part of the town crew. And in the public safety mission, very pleased to announce Paul Samatero has started as our new police lieutenant on December 1st, and we welcome him to Brandon. He will come to the Select Board to meet you and the public at a future meeting. And Bill and I did have a very good meeting with a candidate to replace our retired Police Administrative Assistant Linda Graziano, so we had a good meeting with her on Friday, and the chief is proceeding along with that process. The other thing I do want to highlight is on the second page of my report, there was a question about the tax sale. So right now, the tax sale is about three months, a little bit less than three months away. There are 12 properties currently in the tax sale, and the question was, the total value of the taxes owed, and the total value of the taxes owed is $157,559.86 on those 12 properties. So that was in addition to my report. And other than that, happy to take questions. I don't have any updates.
Thank you, Mr. Hopkins. Questions for Mr. Hopkins from the Select Board?
I got a question. Is the administration position at the police department full-time or part-time?
I believe it's going to make sense for it to be full-time. So we talked about what that person can do. I think it would be candidate-dependent, so some candidates, it maybe wouldn't make sense to go the whole full-time, but if the candidate has extra qualifications and can do some of the tasks that the sworn officers have been doing, this would take some work off of the sworn officers and allow them to, you know, do more policing in the community. So right now, the candidate that we interviewed seems like she would be a good fit for a full-time position.
Additional questions for the Town Manager? Questions for the Town Manager on his report from the public? Nope. Yes, my real are... Almost didn't get it in there that time.
Is the, is the tax sale process online somewhere to look up?
So if you go, if you go, the process, so if you go on the town website on notices, which is on the front page, there's a notice that says Notice of Tax Sale, and if you click that and open the document, it'll list the 12 properties. It does not list the exact amount owed on the notice itself, but if you call the town office, we can provide that amount.
They adapt time, and then they have a year to...
Correct. Yep.
And you pay during the year those taxes.
Right, you pay the amount that's owed at the time of the tax sale, and then you keep the taxes current during the year. Yep.
Thank you.
Hey, number two would be Bill Moore, Community Development.
Doug, this is my report for December the 8th, 2025. For the last time, I'll say. The tickets are available for the Brandon Rec Bus Trip on January 7th to see the Celtics play the Nuggets. There are tickets still available. If we do not get them sold by December 18th, we will be canceling this trip. We're still actively seeking a coach for third and fourth grade girls' basketball. Please reach out with your interest. The under-jazz concert has been postponed until a later date in 2026. On December the 14th, the Brandon Rec in partnership with Colleen Wright Events and now Brandon-based Whirly's World, we'll be hosting Santa bouts at the Town Hall. Starting at 1:00 PM, kids will have the opportunity to use bouncers inside under the watchful eyes of Santa Claus. December 20th, the Town Hall will host in partnership with the DBA, a holiday karaoke party. Folks will be able to use the big screen to sing their hearts content, starting at 2:00 PM. Both of these events are free. We're working with Foley Brothers Brewery to bring a professional comedy show to the Town Hall in January and March. Registration for the winter season of the Brandon Quiz Night with the Brandon Free Public Library is open. We're limited to 14 teams, and we host at the Nashobee Golf Course, so register your six-person team early for the series that starts on Sunday, January 4th, 2026, at 6:30 PM. Free and fun. All registration can be found at brandrec.com.
Questions for Mr. Moore from the board?
I'm looking for a follow-up on Union Street on our project.
We are still working on negotiations with the landowners to get, once we have all the landowner negotiations complete, then it goes back to V-Trans, and then we'll have the ability to be able to apply for more money to go out to bed hopefully sometime next spring.
Okay.
How many more people you need to get for that Boston trip?
A lot, a lot. A fair amount. Two or three will not do. You come in groups of 10, we can talk.
10 Christmas presents, no. Okay, questions for Mr. Moore on his report from the public? None heard. C, reappoint Seth Hopkins and Tim Kingston to the Emergency Management?
Tom Kilpeck.
And Tom Kilpeck, there we go.
So, Mr. Chair, this came to us today. From the last fiscal year, October 1st, 2024 through September 30th, 2025, I, as Emergency Management Director, was one of Brandon's representative to the Regional Emergency Management Committee, and Tom Kilpeck as Fire Chief was the Emergency Services Member from Brandon to that same committee, and we were each other's proxies. And the recommendation is that the Select Board reappoint each of us to that committee to continue. Basically, that committee tries to, on a regional basis, implement the priorities that Vermont Emergency Management has identified as being important to preparedness and things of that nature in our region.
Thank you. Pleasure with the board.
I'll make a motion to approve both those individuals.
Motion.
I'll second that.
Motion. Two seconds. Any additional discussion? We take anyone that volunteers. All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Most? No one? Okay. Item five. This is to consider acceptance of a gift from the Nifty Thrifty, and would you like to present that to us, Mr. Hopkins?
I can. Laura Peterson want to speak to it first? No, let me introduce it? Okay, so there's a one-page memo in the meeting packet that was available. I'll go ahead and just read it, most of it. The Select Board has dedicated the FY22 Town Report for the F, for the 2023 Town Meeting to Nifty Thrifty for their volunteerism, philanthropy, and resilience. Founded in 1975 and led from the beginning by a talented team of community-spirited women, Nifty Thrifty celebrates its 50th anniversary this year, and they're choosing to mark the occasion in an amazing way. Nifty Thrifty's leadership reached out with a suggestion that they would consider making a substantial anniversary gift in support of a solar energy project benefiting the community. This led to a series of conversations, including the Town Management Team and current and past members of the Downtown Brandon Alliance and Brandon Energy Committee, as well as seeking assurance of compliance through outreach to the Vermont League of Cities and Towns and our partners at the State of Vermont Flood Resilient Communities Fund of Vermont Emergency Management. A proposal with a number of components was offered for consideration of the donors. I have received the welcome news that the ladies of Nifty Thrifty Board of Directors have voted to give the Brandon Energy Committee $50,000. Below are the four projects approved for Nifty Thrifty for their directed gift. The first and the most significant use of money will be a rooftop solar array on the police station. We would need to purchase and install new panels, and that would credit the police station Green Mountain Power account, so there would be an operating budget benefit for the taxpayers. The second project is the least expensive. It would be to move 28 solar panels from a floodplain restoration buyout that is scheduled to become property of the town this coming Thursday to the town-owned Conant Square Park and Ride, and that would credit the e-car chargers Green Mountain Power account. So again, an operating budget benefit for the taxpayers. The third project is a rooftop solar on the existing highway garage. We would purchase and install new panels. This would be a smaller size array than the one for the police station because the highway department doesn't use as much electricity as police station. These can be relocated if a new garage is built. It would credit the highway garage Green Mountain Power account for another operating budget benefit that the taxpayers would enjoy. And the fourth project are some e-ink or e-paper solar-powered displays for posting of meeting agendas and announcements at locations throughout the town. This is partly to fill the gap left by the reporter and provide outreach to the residents of Brandon from the town. So I would request two motions. One would be a motion to accept the generous gift of Nifty Thrifty's $50,000 on behalf of the Brandon Energy Committee and the town, and the second would be a vote to authorize the Town Management to proceed with the projects that were endorsed by the Nifty Thrifty Board of Directors that I've just listed.
Hey, pleasure of the board.
Well, I will move to, with gratitude and thanks, accept the $50,000 gift from Nifty Thrifty on behalf of the BEC and the town.
And with additional gratitude and thanks, because this is amazing, I will second that.
Additional discussion by the Select Board? I would like to also thank you because it has a long-term effect on our budgeting process if we're not paying as much for the Green Mountain Power and also at the charging stations. Now, we get a very small percentage of the money from what cars are coming in from out of town or out of state to charge, and if we own, if we're the ones putting that power in there, we will get that also. It will be a gift that keeps on giving. Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion. We have a second to accept the gift.
Tricia Welch.
Tricia Welch.
Hi, I just was curious, does that $50,000 totally fund all four of those projects?
Yes.
Yes.
So the town does not intend to, like, go to a private for-profit solar installer. The town intends to procure the solar panels and to use volunteers from the Energy Committee and the community to install them, other than the actual electrical work, which will be done by a licensed and insured electrician.
Very good. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions before we vote? I'm going to vote, all in favor of the motion to accept the $50,000 gift, please say aye. Now, the second one, we need to...
I move to authorize the Town Management to proceed with the projects that were endorsed by the Nifty Thrifty Board of Director for their directed gift.
Second.
Hey, motion and a second. Any discussion on that? None heard. All in favor of the motion to have the Town Management Team proceed with this? Say aye.
Aye.
Again, again, a thanks to Nifty Thrifty.
Just a quick question. Do we have a general idea of what electricity is used by the police station highway garage and the charger?
We do, and I just want to caution, these are approximations, but yeah. So the system at the police station would be 64 panels to generate 25,000 to 30,000 kilowatt-hours. So the police station has heat pumps, and I think that would be the major, you know, beyond normal power use. The one at the highway department is smaller. It would be 9,300 kilowatt-hours in a year, and the one from Newton Road to come down and take care of the car chargers, I don't have a kilowatt-hour figure on that one, but there's a dollar figure associated with what we have paid each year for power for the charging stations in the $3,000 range.
So we're looking at many thousands of dollars per year.
So the estimate that the Energy Committee provided was in excess of, I'm going to use that, okay, in excess of $5,000 for the police station, $5,000 benefit per year. Something in the range of $3,000 a year for the car chargers and about $1,800 a year at the town highway.
Great.
I gave you the low end of those.
Okay, moving on. Item six on our agenda is to have Stephanie Bork from Rutland Region Planning come and talk to us one more time on the results of input she got after our last meeting. I would just like everyone to listen and enjoy the discussion. Do you want to face them or to face us or?
To me, I more than, I just sit from my chair if that works.
Yeah.
Well, we need you to speak into the microphone.
Halfway, yeah, halfway, that works perfect.
I'll spin around.
Yeah, why don't you come over here and then zoom to?
One. So thank you for the introduction, and I'm happy to be here on behalf of Brandon's local steering committee for this project. Just to recap, we are working on a scoping study to evaluate potential options for a shared use path to connect downtown Brandon with Forestale. In your Select Board meeting packets, there was a memo along with copies of the conceptual layouts and the evaluation matrix for the alternatives, so I just want to make sure you folks received those materials and have had a chance to look at them. So in terms of the purpose of this project, it's, you know, to provide a safe and accessible, it's to provide safe and accessible facilities to accommodate pedestrian and bicycle travel between those two destinations, which, of course, up in the Forestale area include the Nashobee School and the Brandon Senior Center. So the need was identified very early on in the project. Downtown Brandon has an extensive sidewalk network around the US Route 7 Center Street corridor, and Forestale has sidewalks on Forestale Road, otherwise known as Vermont Route 73, near the Nashobee School. However, those two discrete sidewalk networks don't have a dead, don't have dedicated bicycle or pedestrian facilities that connect them, and they're only connected by Vermont Route 73. I traffic volume, truck traffic, high speeds, and the existing topography adjacent to that route make Route 73 in its current condition unsafe and inaccessible for pedestrians and bicyclists. So this scoping study is looking to provide a safe, low-stress connection between these two areas, create an increased sense of community by connecting these two neighborhoods, and improve health and recreation opportunities by increasing the walkability of the town. So that purpose and need statement was the outcome of the first public meeting held for this project. It was called the Local Concerns Meeting, and it was held, gosh, yeah, I was going to say quite, quite a bit ago at this time, at this point. Yeah, September of '24. So since that first public meeting, we've also had a second public meeting, which was more recent, and that's where the conceptual alternatives were presented to the public. The meeting presentations, notes, and survey results resulting from those meetings and a public survey that accompanied them is available on the project landing page, which is at tinyurl.com, tinyurl.com backslash Forestale Shared Use Path. That landing page has been up since pretty much the beginning of this study to provide a single online location for folks to be able to access current information about, about the study and where we are in the process. So as you heard at the alternatives presentation, which was presented by the consulting firm who's performing the study, DuVoy and King, there have been four alternatives that were developed for consideration plus a no-build option, and the memo kind of outlines the key features of each of the four alternatives, and in the interest of time, I really don't want to, like, go through all of those because that's exactly what was presented at that second public meeting. In terms of the survey that was administered after that meeting, it simply asked the question, which of the four, which of the four alternatives, plus a no-build option, do you vote as your top choice? Because the next step that we're at in the scoping process is to select one of the alternatives as the preferred alternative that will be advanced in the study. So I'm not sure if all of you on the board have gone through a V-Trans-funded scoping study before, but, you know, this is kind of a key milestone in the process, and it, it, I want to just be clear that this is not a commitment to build anything, right? So when I say you're, you're being asked at this point in the process to select a preferred alternative, it's an alternative from the list that has been developed to, to advance in the study, okay? So if at some point in the future the town decided that they wanted to pursue implementation, you would, you would do so based on, you know, the preferred alternative that would be documented in this study. So that's kind of where we are now. The local steering committee, of course, has taken into consideration the input they received from the public during the meetings and from the surveys, as well as the evaluation matrix that was included in your packets, and they've come up with a recommended preferred alternative that they wanted to present for the board's consideration. So they believe that alternative two best meets the stated purpose and need that I'd be, you know, that I shared with you the beginning of my little overview, and so they're recommending that that's what the town selects as the preferred alternative.
Okay.
Do you have any questions?
Oh.
Regarding where we're at in the process or what's been recommended by your local steering committee?
I guess I'd take questions from anyone up here that wants to ask the questions. Pardon?
I have no questions.
I only have a question, like, it's, you're saying that alternative two is the suggested one to continue to look at, and is it feasible to look at part of it and not the entire?
So Doug, I would just interrupt you real quick. The mode, you know, the action that you're being asked to take is not to do further study
Right.
of anything. The study is pretty much complete as far as the conceptual layouts. So what you'd be doing is you'd be selecting one of these layouts that you would want to identify as the preferred in this scoping effort. Further evaluation would be done as a next step after the study's complete. If you were to implement and that, you know, you go through a very robust design phase. Yeah. So I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I just want to make sure you understood that there wasn't going to be any more further evaluation, per se.
Yeah, I was only looking at alternative two and seeing that the 7.6 million dollar price tag or whatever, and knowing that we have nothing. And that's Nifty Thrifty really digs in deeper. You never know. You know, yet, we've, we've gone through this process, and, you know, I guess my brain has only keyed in and saying that we have sidewalks down Park Street, would it be worthy of, you know, shrinking down alternative two to continuing down Park Street and not, you know, and looking at what that would cost, not continuing all the way along, but?
I think what you're describing is what we would consider phasing. Phasing of the project's preferred alternative, right? Because the evaluation matrix that you received in your packet indicates the total project length of each of these alternatives, and alternative two is, you know, about 2.7 miles long. So knowing that, the most, I guess the most common method of municipalities paying for these kinds of bike ped improvements is through the V-Trans grant program. Part of this hoping study, if you're looking at a much larger project in both maybe scale as well as cost, is to, as part of the study, recommend phasing. So breaking up the larger project into more implementable segments that could be funded with a typical V-Trans grant program maximum award, so kind of in that $2 million range. So the study, and actually, there was a phasing part of the alternatives presentation, so there is a recommended phasing strategy available for all the options, including the one that's being recommended as the preferred, and that will be included as part of the final report.
Other questions or comments from the board or just at this point, except the report as presented?
I would like you to select the, the one that we, as the committee endorsed
Right.
because alternative two.
The Select Board needs to actually take action on the recommendation in the form of a motion that would be to accept the committee's recommendation and select alternative two as the preferred alternative. That's ultimately what would need to happen. So I don't know if the board would be ready to make that motion this evening, or if it's something that you'd want to make at your next meeting, but ultimately, that's necessary in order for us to move forward, us, the town, sorry, to move forward with completing the report.
Question from Tricia Welch on Zoom.
Tricia.
Just a question. According to the survey, 33.3% of respondents said no build, and the alternative two only had 26%. So why was that chosen over the no build?
So I can, I could let Bill speak on behalf as maybe a member of the steering committee, but I can tell you that the... But I can tell you that the survey was only one of the pieces of the information that the the steering committee utilized in order to come up with their recommendation. So it didn't govern the decision. It was just one piece of information.
And I would also note that two-thirds of the survey did want a path. They just couldn't agree on which path they wanted. So I think what we need to make super clear right now is that all we are doing is saying if sometime in the future a huge amount of money gets dumped in our lap and we decide to use that huge amount of money to build a path, which path do we want to build? So we're not saying we're gonna build a path right now. We're not devoting any budgetary funds to a path right now. And if we were to choose the no-build option, what that would mean is if in the future someone dumped a huge amount of money in our laps and we thought we want to build a path, we didn't have an alternative chosen. If that makes.
It's, that's a very good point. Absolutely. I think that there are, if, if I were to kind of take what I've learned from the V-Trans project supervisors who participate in overseeing the development of this work, they would recommend that you, you, you know, obviously you have to take cost into account. That's why it's part, it's, it's one of the criteria in the evaluation matrix. But you ultimately have to look at that purpose and need statement that was developed very early on. And I would remind the community that this, the, the reason for doing this study was an outgrowth of a Safe Roots to School project. So you, you're, you're looking at an alternative that you think best meets the purpose and need. And if you, i- i- and if there are options that do satisfy the purpose and need, it would be in your best interest to select one that you think you would have, you know, the best chance of implementing at some point in the future if, if the, if the town so chose, right? But if you say, if you selected no build, you would be very hard pressed, I think, to seek additional V-Trans grant funding at some point in the future to do something without kind of revisiting the scoping effort. Yeah. Gary.
I apologize, because I only see you for the first time, but.
Gary, could you cut the microphone?
As I read on alternative two, the descriptor on the left side, it says ten feet of asphalt and separated by five feet of green strip along that route. Does the town own or have right-of-way for like ten feet off of that entire route?
Nope.
I mean, it would surprise me if it did.
It'd be the same.
To look at the bullets that follow that description. Yeah, the bullets basically provide all the caveat. Yep. So during a scoping effort, you know, these are not, you know, this is a pretty tight budget. So you don't, for example, go out and do any topographic survey, or you don't go out and do extensive right-of-way work. Can folks not hear me? Oh, okay. So you, right on. Don't do topographic survey. We don't do an extensive right-of-way process. That's typically done during the design phase of a construction project. So you're really seeing something that is very conceptual. Right? It's, it's, it's a, it's an engineer's first, I, I would say the first step in looking at a project area and making a, a, a you know, an engineer, engineering-based judgment as to what is, is feasible, right? So Du Bois and King looked at the project area and made some initial recommendations as to which side of the road would probably work the best. But that is all subject to the bulleted caveats, you know, with topographic survey. There's also information from the historical and cultural resource assessments that are done as part of the scoping effort that would be taken into consideration at a future design phase. So there's no guarantee, right, that a future path would look exactly like this alignment because it's subject to future, um, future due diligence, quite frankly, in a, in a design phase. And that's another reason why, you know, breaking it down into smaller segments and phasing it is really helpful because if you've ever gone through a V-Trans-funded construction project with federal money, it's, there's a lot of steps and there are a lot of requirements which can add up really quickly. But that's kind of a long-winded answer to your question. We're super early. We're like so early, right? So we're at the scoping stage. Yeah. Yep.
Yes, Brent.
So if, if we wanted to do Park Street Extension, this is part of the phase. Do you have to do the whole phase two design or just do that part of it?
Yeah, so I'm not going to answer any questions regarding a future design phase, right? That is outside of the scope of what we're looking at in this study. So that would be a question that you would pose after the study's complete and the town has made a decision to actually build anything.
And we have money.
Yeah, the ifs, you know, ifs and hows, something would be constructed. I, you know, that's not really the point of the scoping study.
It's if they approve phase two.
Well, they're, they're looking at alternative two.
Alternative two, but they really only want the Park Street Extension part of it.
Yeah, there's nothing that commit them. No.
The whole that.
No.
To design work.
No, no, no. So that I, I'll, I'll say it again. In, in the scoping process, this, you know, what is selected as a preferred alternative to connect these two destinations, right? There was a problem and a purpose and need identified even before this study began. It was reinforced at the local concerns level. What we're showing is a project that would fulfill that purpose and need the best way out of the four alternatives that were developed, right? If the town chooses to move forward with some part of implementing that path in the future, they basically can demonstrate to a potential grant funder that, hey, we've really given this due diligence. We've completed a scoping effort. This is what we think we wanted to do. Now we're ready to start the design phase for whatever part of that alignment. Yeah, yes, exactly. So it doesn't commit them to building the entire path. They could build just a segment along Park Street and never come back to anything else.
Concerned about.
Yeah.
The whole thing. I was concerned about designing the whole.
No.
Just to get a statement.
No, no, you would only design that which you're building. Right? You would, because the design phase is tremendously expensive.
Yeah.
You would not invest money in designing something that you had no intent of building. And V-Trans wouldn't loan you money to design something that you didn't build. You'd have to pay them back. Yeah.
Would allow them to do important.
Yes.
They selected.
Yes.
Phase two, phase two in particular. If they approve base two.
Alternative two. Yeah. So if, if the board acted on the steering committee's recommendation and selected alternative two as the preferred alternative, should, yeah. Ex- exactly. Yes, if any, you know, their, their circumstances would have to align for it for, you know, something to be built at some point in the future. And this study does not commit them, commit the town to building anything. Yes.
And then I'd just like to re- remind people that there's no free money. Grant money is all of our tax dollars. Federal, state, everybody's dollars that are divvied up and given out. So it's not a monetary, it's not free.
Hey, pleasure the board.
You got another one?
I'm sorry, I did not see your hand.
Apologize, I was not at the last public meeting. I've got a number of questions. I'm curious as to the current study that you're ongoing since what, September of twenty twenty-four? How is that being funded?
Of the trans grant.
It is a V-Trans grant.
Yeah, it's a.
Is it, is it at no cost to the town?
No, V-Trans grants are an eighty-twenty.
Yes, I understand.
Is, was this a transportation alternatives grant?
Yes, this is a tap grant. Blackboard voted to fund that. Can't remember which pot of money they voted it from, local option tax. So, uh, uh, so of the study, which I, I want to say including everything was close to fifty, forty-five, between forty-five and fifty, our share was twenty percent of that.
I think that you understand that if you do get the V-Trans grant, so between seven point six million and twelve point six million, that.
They wouldn't award you grant that big likely. Well, that's why I said, you know, normally they're in the.
It would be a bond.
Is paid for by other sources, either fundraising or.
Eighty percent.
I'm sorry, twenty percent.
Yes, yes.
By other sources.
So, and I'll just kind of briefly explain to you, when a municipality applies to the agency of transportation for a bike ped grant or transportation alternatives grant, with that application, they basically have to provide a letter of commitment regarding local match. So those decisions get made way before the town would even apply for money, right?
I guess that in reading the presentation and the alternative, the costs vary between seven point six and twelve point six million.
Depending on the alternative.
Right, seven point six being the lower cost alternative.
So you're, you're looking at, so don't forget, there's two different types of costs presented here. There's a construction cost and a total project cost. They ranged, yeah, from twelve point six down to ten point four. That was the low and the high of a total project cost. Yeah.
So the other thing I'm curious about in the, was there any kind of pre-study to determine sort of what the demographics of the area was? So for example, the senior center. So from what I understand, the total project length ranges from two point seven miles to three point six mile. How many seniors would be able to utilize a path or a sidewalk to get to the senior center of walking?
No, there's no demographic analysis that goes in as part of the scoping study.
Would that not make sense to determine that before going?
It's not a funded part of a V-Trans scoping study? Is the best I can answer.
So that would be done after that, so that we would know whether it's viable. Viable to even.
I think that if you're going to be looking to pursue any type of other analysis that isn't part of a traditional V-Trans scoping package, the town is absolutely at liberty to do whatever they feel the due diligence, a due diligence effort would be in order to make a decision regarding construction.
Uh, there was also some environmental concerns that were maybe present in any one of the alternatives. Just wanted to make sure of that.
Yeah, the evaluation matrix is, has a pretty thorough list of initial screening criteria and environmental resources is one of them.
You know, other things that I, when I was looking into the V-Trans grant criteria is part of it was improvement to access to public transportation. Has that been into this project at all? I'm not sure that those.
No, I, I don't think this would, that wasn't one of the purpose and need elements developed for this study. Yeah, you're welcome. You're welcome.
I, I have a question. So we paid twenty percent already for this study, correct?
Yes, that money was, yes, that money was committed. There's no, that's like.
There's no outstanding.
I think it might be better to say we've paid a hundred percent of this and we're getting reimbursed for eighty percent of this.
And so the next step going forward, we're paid for it. So if we vote one of these options, we don't have to kick more money and we just get a finalized study that we can act on anytime down the road. We have at least got finalization, is that correct?
Or not act on if we choose. I mean, that's.
Right, right.
I think of any, so I'd like you to think about acting on in a, in a, in a different way because acting on could be that you actually build something. But acting on could also be, you now have much more information about how to answer the question that came out of a Safe Roots to School study. Like, how can we, how can we create a safer connection to the school from Brandon? You now have a lot of information to be able to answer that question. So, you know, I, I, I just think there's some value in this work to address something that was flagged as a, as a concern, a need, a desire of the community through a different effort. So I think there's some value in it.
Yeah, the point I was trying to make is if we vote one of these alternatives, we're, we're basically already paid for, we will get more information that could be used in a later date.
Yes.
Because we know we don't have any funds anywhere near that at this date. And I can't say that I can't even see it on the horizon. You know, personally, but that's, you know.
Building anything.
Right.
You, but in order to finish the study, the town needs to select a preferred alternative.
Okay. I think we should finish the study, but what was the pleasure of the board?
Based on the current, our current town budget and foreseeable future budgets, and no bill.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Okay, does somebody else have a different motion?
I would move that we accept alternative two with the understanding that this does not commit us to any further action. It just provides us with the study to have in hand if in the future it becomes feasible.
I'll second that.
And that can also be a no build at that point, right? So it just gives us something else in hand. Okay, so we have, do have a motion in a second on that.
Hello?
Hello.
Karen.
Yeah, I've been waving my hand for the last five minutes. Now, I was at the first two meetings, and at the last meeting, it's my understanding that there was a majority of folks that actually attended these meetings, that there be a no build. Now, there's folks that didn't attend the meetings that have added on to the survey that may or may not have been fully informed about the cost and the different aspects of what have been proposed now. And the newest proposal is to keep doing a study on something that was initially decided on as a no build, but with the future potential, regardless of cost, regardless of dynamics of the town, housing or any other street changes, to go ahead and go with the study that could be outdated in less than five years. So I'm asking you guys to consider this because this whole new prospect of continuing with the study that at the second meeting was turned down is new to me. And I also don't understand why you would look at a study that's going to be outdated and have to do a restudy somewhere down the line, costing more money, more resources, more time and more effort for something that the proposed need of a three-mile path, at the last meeting, it went from twelve to fourteen million dollars. And I don't know if all the people that participated in that survey actually looked at what they're spending now, what the state is asking us for the twelve percent tax increase and all these other needs that are coming down the pike to continue with something that's actually going to be outdated. So I'm asking you to think also of the people that really don't, won't, and, and really don't have the time, effort and, and interest in having this happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I take a quick separate response? If we were voting on whether to build this right now, I would vote no. I want to be very clear about that. We're not voting about whether we're going to build this or not. I want to be very clear about that, we're not voting about whether we're going to build this or not. All we're doing is getting the finished information for a study that we have already paid for. Which I think it is prudent to do because we have already paid for this information. And we might as well get all of it before we make any further decisions. I want to reiterate, if someone was asking me right now, vote to spend ten million dollars on this project. I would vote no and sleep very well about it. That's where we're at. We, nothing we are doing is committing us to any future funding. I'm probably on this board the most in favor of this project happening at some point and I would vote no on doing it. I just want to be really, really upfront about what we're talking about here.
Yeah, I think what Jeff has said is absolutely clear, I mean. If someone were to come to me right now and say, vote to, you know, spend twenty percent of ten million or, you know, just assuming. We all know we don't have that money right now and we all know that our taxpayers aren't going to be willing to do that right now. That's not what we're talking about. All we're talking about is finishing up something we've already paid for and is good information and. You know, the, the things that are going to be outdated about it, maybe the cost projections. But the actual information in it is still, I mean, our streets aren't changing. And the needs aren't changing. So what we're really just talking about is finishing a project that was started and paid for. Getting this information into a form that we then have in our pocket for future use and future reference. Or not committing to anything.
Was there a rebuttal there? Yes, I, I would say the same thing that I'm, I'm kind of like right along with Jeff, that I would. I, I was kind of a hard no just due to dollars and cents. Um, and I, I was basically a no. Um, as far as going on with one of these options, only because I didn't want to waste people's time, effort and money. Developing something that we feel we're not ever going to build. But I can be swayed or, you know, I, I, I would love to have the, the report in hand. Um, and if it, if we've already paid for that and, and it's not going to cost us anymore, then I, I don't have a problem with that. So I, I don't have a problem with either one of them, I don't have a problem with the, the no and I don't have a problem with the, the current motion.
I think the only point I would make is that the one uh, thing to concern, to think about if we go with a no build. Is it's basically poking Vtrans in the eye. That.
And I think.
You gave us this grant to fund this study, to come up with an alternative. And we use that money and we've decided that we're just not going to do anything. And, and what that means down the line is if there comes a time when we do want to do. A transportation alternative project or something and we want to go to Vtrans and say, hey, we have this idea. And you have this grant out there, they're going to look back at their records and it'll be like, oh yeah, but there was that time that you, we gave you a grant before.
People are misunderstood, but a no build alternative is. Versus choosing at some point in the future not to build anything. Thank you, those are two different topics, okay? So in the evaluation matrix on the far right-hand column is the no build option. That is a required option in all Vtrans funded scoping studies. And the no build option is intended. It's very rare that a community would select a no build option. What it means is that none of the alternatives to the satisfaction of the town. Addressed the purpose and need of the project. I don't feel like there are alternatives that have been developed. Conceptual alternatives that have been developed that do not address your purpose and need. So, I mean, the, the purpose and need in terms of the matrix is the second criteria. It's characterized as project goals, improving pedestrian safety. So alternative one, two, three and four. Um, they would achieve that project goal, right? But the no build does not. So, you know, the, you'd have to, I think if, if the municipality chooses a no build as the alternative. I think you need to provide an explanation as to that choice as it relates to the alternatives that were developed. No build is not. A, a, a choice because you, you don't want to ultimately build any. Okay, you have that choice. What you're documenting in the study is if we were to build something, this makes the most sense. We think it best fulfills the purpose and need of the four alternatives that were developed.
So basically by saying no build, we're. Expressing our opinion that none of the four alternatives that were developed meet the purpose and goal. And thus all our money was wasted. Or Vtrans money, I mean.
Yeah.
That, I mean, we're basically saying. Right.
Destination, you'd basically be starting over.
From ground zero.
Right, because funds are limited for a sculpting topic. There could be an infinite number of alternatives that could be studied, right? It's the job of the engineering firm to look at, you know, what, what. Potential options have the highest feasibility of actually being able to. Rock it in a reasonable timeframe for a reasonable amount of money, right?
Well, I'm going to vote no because I was the one that voted no on the approval of this to start with.
Yeah, I think it's time to move the question on, um, so the, who made the motion?
Cecil.
So you want to restate your motion just so it's clear?
Um, without all my throat clearing and caveats before, I, I move that we accept alternative two. Um, as the alter, preferred alternative.
I will restate my second.
Okay. So that's the motion, that's it, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Proposed.
Proposed.
And now I have to do a roll call vote, correct? Where we identifi-.
Really should at a hybrid meeting.
And so a roll call vote just means I have to ask each one of you which way you voted, just.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, I did aye.
No.
No, aye, aye, that's a new rule through VLCT, I'm sorry.
You're fine.
It's the first time we've had to invoke it. Oh, yeah.
That happens sometime, right?
That's right. Okay, that ends uh. Stephanie, thank you very, very much for that.
I'll advise the consultant, pointing that the town wants to go to day two and they will um. Proceed to finalize the draft report, that will be presented at the third and final pub- public meeting for this one.
I ask one other question because I was not involved in this early on and whatever, so I, I. I only wonder in my mind, we, we have sidewalks from S U B school all the way down to the senior center, correct? Why did we not look at when we get out to Route seventy-three? Why do we have it going town farm road and all the way around instead of. Doing the same thing going up seventy-three with the sidewalk and joining into the sidewalk at the senior center? That would seem.
Building a sidewalk instead of a path?
Yeah, well, it's the same, I mean.
So is this following Route seventy-four?
Yeah, I mean, that's the shortest route.
Uh, as an early on committee member up, so that was one of the first ones, interestingly enough, our first public meeting, that was. The local, yeah, the local concerns meeting where people were like seventy-three would be a ridiculous place to put a sidewalk. The people that live along seventy-three, including Ms. Rhodes, who were adamant about how unsafe that would be to have a sidewalk there. And there's all these pinch, there's two independent pinch points, one right near where she lives where there's ledges. And then there's, of course, the ledges down by Stone Mill Dam, so that route almost out of hand got dis- disqualified.
There are infinite number of ways you could probably get to these two destinations. And there was a lot of feedback that came out of the local concerns meeting about different routes. There's been apparently quite a bit of study by local folks about different trail networks. And different possible ways to kind of move in that direction from downtown Brandon. And ultimately with Gary and committee who tasked with kind of sifting through all of that. And narrowing it down to a set of four that would be, you know, that's what was allowable under this little work. Well, you wait the consulting, but you know, they, they don't have a budget to look at fifteen different alternatives. But I think to answer your question, the. It was based on feedback from a local concerns meeting.
Okay, I just, I was, was not involved in, so I just don't know and. You know, I, I think that there's parts of this that could be very, very good. And so hopefully after the rest of it comes in, we can maybe sort anything out, so. Okay, now we are moving on to item seven on our agenda. Which is public comment and participation. Anybody here want to say anything? Nobody wants to say anything, before we adjourn. Just want to remind everyone that tomorrow evening is our uh. Next budget meeting, at what time, seven P M? Here in this room, so if anyone wants to come and have the opportunity to uh, speak their mind on the budget. Uh, we're winding down, we're getting pretty close to the end. So we always get people at town meeting that say, did you think of this or did you do this? So this is when you're getting right to the very end of that and we have had some people come to all of the meetings, so. Um, if you want to come, come tomorrow. Now I'm ready.
Motion adjourn.
Second.
Cecil can have it.
How fair.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.